Good evening. Thank you all for coming tonight. This is our annual town meeting. I would ask that the town clerk please read the warning for the annual town meeting.
The electors and citizens qualified to vote at the town meetings in the town playing field are hereby sworn to meet on Tuesday, December 28th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. at the Plainfield Town Hall. A community alley in Plainfield, Connecticut for the following purpose: A. To review and accept the town department report and the auditor's report dated at Plainfield, Connecticut this 14th day of December, 2021. Kevin M. Cunningham for selectmen, Arthur W. Gagny, selectmen, and Scott Gardner, selectmen.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to entertain a motion for moderator. I nominate Kevin Cunningham for moderator.
Okay.
And any other nominations for moderator? Karen, entertain a motion to close nominations for moderator.
So moved.
Yeah, so moved?
Second.
A second. Thank you very much. All in favor of Kevin Cunningham as moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. If you didn't get a copy, there are copies in the back of the room on the table back there. We're going to go through this fairly quickly. There are two copies. One is for the town of Plainfield, 2021 financial statements, and it's dated December 8th, 2021. And it states in the town charter, we have a review of the audit and also a review of the, this is on section 2, 3 of the town annual town meeting. It's a review and acceptance of the reports for the prior fiscal year from the town officials and the town auditor. That's why there's two forms there. So I don't know how you'd like to do this. If you want me to read through it, I can do that, or I can have, go right ahead and ask. So if you have one that's listed with a right clue, it's just a few pages long. We can go through that first. Town of Plainfield financial statements. We have the presentation that was given to us by the auditor. That's what this is in front of you. So that's the financial statements audit, financial results. And there is, I apologize, but without the auditor here, I can't answer too many in-depth questions, but I can give you some overview. As well as we do have the, some members of the Board of Finance here as well that might be able to help out with backup. The total fund balance was increased by $489,000 on assigned fund balance of 8.4 million. Unassigned fund balance represents about 17.3% of operating budget. Just so you know, in case there is a problem and the state of Connecticut says there's not more money, we're supposed to be able to operate for two and a half months. And that does clarify that this money is available for that. The healthy target is typically between 80, 16% of your budget expenditures, and we're well above that, so we would like to continue that trend if possible. We have $1.4 million unassigned for future education expendables. You'll see that there is a chart talking about the last 15 years. The fund balance has been increasing over that time, unassigned and total. On page number five, you'll see that there are revenues that were under budget by $16,000 property taxes, which is the $455,000 above most anticipated. So kudos for the tax collector and for those residents who decided to pay their taxes. That's usually a combination of things, and if you have a question on how that works, Karen can answer that for you, but basically, we are very happy with the fact that people are paying their taxes. There was also a tax lien sale in the past. We just been doing that again, as well as auction of certain items at the highway department as well. So those things continue to flow in, so we appreciate that. Tax collection percentages are 98.1% of the question of the current year assessment. And state aid was $306,000, sorry, $306,000 lower than anticipated, which the combination of the adult end and local capital proved to add into that. We're still able to go forward with our budget, so we're very happy. The result of the operations has continued on page six. Expenditures were about 1.5 million below anticipated amount, so we were kind of thrifty with our monies. Significant results in those variables, they had one unfavorable, the employee benefits, of $415,000. But favorable was the capital outlays of $846 and the education of $876. So those are leftover monies at the end of the year. There was also a page seven for the Water Pollution Control Authority. It's a different division of the town. For those people who have sewer, it's obviously, you're paying a sewer rate for that as well. But they were talking about the operational revenues amounting to $2.46 million, which is an increase from the prior year revenue of $1.78. I know the board selected and modified or adjusted the rates to make so we could do more things with the sewer department. Operating expenses were $2.37 million, an increase from the prior year amounting from $1.98. So there's more activities going on in the sewer department, more upgrades. Operating income of $89,000 for 2021 compares with virtual loss of $205,000 in the previous year. So the fund was net position of $8.2776, which is unrestricted for operational use in case of emergencies. Page eight is the town's private pension plan was funded at 109.99%. The town has made contributions to the plan of $1.76 million exceeding the required contributions of $1.36. What that brings down to is very simple. The actuaries give us a number. They say how much money we need to raise in order to put into the pensions. During that process, you may see that there's more retirements that are coming up, so we anticipate that. We anticipate how much money we're going to need. Every year, we come up with how much is expended for those people who have retired, and we're trying to get on track with that as well. So the total liability is $29.4 million for the fiduciary assets of $32.4, meaning the stock market's doing well, so it's helping us out tremendously. The assumptions look reasonable. Mortality tables adjusted up in 2019, previously done in 2017. We have an investment rate of return of 6.5 for the market debt recovery. Other post-employment benefits, the town plan was funded at 15.1% for total net OPEB liability of 6.2. We're funded at 95% of the actuarial determining our contributions of $719,331 fiscal year 2021. Don't have a lot of detail on that unfortunately. For findings on page 10 and 11. Page 10 talks about the board of ed transitions to a new financial reporting system, significantly improving the audit process and their end for clarity of individual grants. So we applaud the Board of Education for that. That's very helpful for the auditors, whether cis auditor or anybody else. They discussed the town and what are they generating a formal broad risk assessment document moving forward. I think that's a great idea. For uniform guidance, what they tell us at the end is what the report is basically. Here's how it lays down right now. In accordance to the uniform guidance, we selected our federal programs for compliance testing. We do a testing just to make sure everything matches up. The two that they picked were the coronavirus relief funds and the child nutrition cluster. Everything came back fine on those. Uniform guidance audit is still ongoing, however, no non-compliance's were noted, and expect to have uniform guidance audit taken by the end of January. I think they're all just about done with that as we speak. So they've done very well to help us out. We're thinking that might be an extension for the single-state audit. In accordance with the state of Connecticut, single audit requirements, they selected three-state audit focused with compliance testing. Adult Ed, municipal grant in aid, Town 8 Road. Their audit is still ongoing, however, no non-compliance's were noted during their testing. And again, they expect to have a single audit complete mid-January. They're actually ahead of that, so I think they'll be done on the first week of January. I don't know how many questions I can answer for you, but I'm willing to entertain questions at this time. Anybody have a question on the audit? I guess I can sum it up very quickly. It was a very good audit, and we were noted that by the auditor, and the Board of Finance approved the audit and this document, so they've come in front of the town. So hopefully the stock market will keep going well, and we'll be good for a while. That is the audit side of it. We have another packet in front of you as well. This one's more morning. This one, this is the discussion on the annual report for the town of Plainfield, depart by department. And inclusive in there is also some of the boards and commissions that meet, because we wanted to include them as well, so you know what's going on with the town. This one was put together with Tom Sinkowitz. Tom is here. Okay. But they met. There were two resignations during the year. The budget passed the town meeting. It was passed with grant total of $48,766, $810. And mill rate stayed the same, so it was zero mill. Very much appreciated. You'll note that the board of selectmen has probably about a couple of them. I apologize. Four pages, because we were very busy. It gives a description of the powers and responsibilities for the board of selectmen, talking about the reviewing of the ordinances annually. That was a huge, huge job, and thank you, Art, for that, because you still got more to do. Still got more to do. But if you note that the, all of the ordinances are on the town website, so that's a great improvement. You don't have to come into the town clerk's office anywhere to ask for it. It's available online. That's the intent. Goal here is to put everything online. So that's the next goal. We started with the audit process and hope to continue on with that with the auditors. We have sole, so we were very fortunate to hire more people to come in, and we're very happy with those hires. We're very, very pleased with that. We have a full-time rent director. We have a new legal counsel, a grant writer. And the number that you see here is what, when I wrote the report, he's given us $200,000 worth of grant money. He's up to $250,000 now. For our heart-stayed community, you'll notice that when we came into the building, there's an AED there. The yellow AEDs also, we have them scattered throughout the town buildings. And we're trying to get the signs from the state that get to put up saying we're heart-stayed. We're trying to share that information with people. We will continue this with free CPR classes to the public. So we'd like to continue that process, and we'll be doing so by putting out the information in the next couple of weeks. So we have negotiated with six different meeting contracts. I've got two more to go. We'll hopefully finish that off within the next couple of months. We brought ECO transportation back. We're still working with GW Rail. We're trying to knock down the time that they're actually going to transfer in the town railroad app. The problem that we're having is that they're usually coupling in longer cars, and that's why it takes so long. But I did have a discussion with them a few weeks ago. I wasn't happy with something else they were doing, and I hope to follow that up soon. Page two, we did have a discussion about Little Ridge Road and doing a fix for drainage issues, which was taken care of already. Obviously, we've had the biggest thing that we've had many, many years come through with the COVID-19 and how we partner with the health district and CIMA board. We have now, as of today, four dates per week for dry fumes. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and we just had Saturday from 10 to 2. We're working with Open Space. There's 162 acres that we have purchased, and we're looking for passive recreation, and we'll be starting up a committee on that soon as a follow-up. We will be starting a committee to help us out to figure out what we'd like to do over there. We did receive $4.5 million to help the broadband infrastructure. Sewer upgrades to support families and businesses that have been affected by COVID-19. And through the board of selectmen, we've actually allocated some of those monies already.
Mostly to sewers.
Mostly to sewers because we designated it behind the times, and we need to upgrade sewer. We had renegotiated a five-year lease with DAPCO and at the town highway garage. And we have a lower percentage rate with also with the, with the transfer station as well. So that's helping us tremendously. We like events. As you can see in the list here, we'd like to do things with residents, and we're open to more events. So we did help and support the bike lane, town-run fireworks, celebrate Plainfield, DJ Gray, Day Campbell Hospital, Pride of the Lawn. We worked to upgrade the Plainfield and Musa Memorial Parks and those two tanks. And we're trying to do that by, without extra monies coming out of the town fund. So we were able to do that with leftover monies, and we were holding back based on COVID. So again, the entire work is, ordinance book was updated and is now online. There was a small grant we received for neglected cemeteries. We're working on that by, two of the cemeteries down Highway grew. We're working on it, cleaned up, and we have a lot more to do, a lot more work, and a lot more volunteers as well. So a lot of new businesses that came in. There's a list right there. I won't bore you with that, but there's a lot of businesses that have come in. Obviously, if anybody's watching, you've seen that the Amazon has broken ground, and we have the N-Mile Distribution going up, and the walls are all up right now, so now they're going to be putting up the roof soon. Multiple municipal projects, the town engineers, Cemetery Road, trying to fix the water drainage issues there, Pond Hill Road and those bridge concerns, the Lethrop Road sidewalks, Warwickin sidewalks, railroad app parking lot lights. So if those are now in, we'll be installing those in the next few weeks. We have holiday decorations. I hope you all like the ones that are out in front of town hall. We plan on adding more to that for next year. More flags purchased for flag poles. We have video cameras around this town hall, which helped us tremendously, because we've already had some issues that we were able to identify immediately. You'll notice that the resurfacing was done on the Lions Park track, the basketball courts, Musa, Little League, Warwickin, and here as well. So for these meetings, we like to try to give as much information ahead of time as possible. You'll notice that there were signs that were purchased saying that there's a town meeting on Tuesday. We also have it for Mondays, and we're going to get order more for the town meeting today. We have a new town website. We're working on a pixel link and updating a community calendar. If there's people who are interested in saying, "I have something going on, that want to use the community calendar," just call in. We'll put it up there. No problem at all. We're working with NextEra Energy, Snake Meadow Road Energy, and East Point Energy for possible solar energy projects, projects coming into Plainfield. Head start is now at the Plainfield Recreation Program. We had some FEMA reimbursements for damages during Storm Isaiah, and that's a $4,000 there. $5,100 for restaurant voters for a grant there. Household Hazard Waste Day had 370 participants. We're working on, with Eastern Connecticut Land Bank, to set up a former command site. Interroyal, this is a list here, but I can tell you the update basically. Interroyal, we're getting more, we have a $200,000 grant there for assessment and also planning on what the next steps will be and what it can be. So working on that right now to apply for other grants, so we can get monies like Norwich Hospital did, so the town's not going to have to pay for the demolition anymore. So that's what we're using that money for. Again, another successful tax lien sale. We just got approval for Quineland Valley Trail, so the state of Connecticut is working on that continuation over in Musa. Again, will limit it ways with lower rates. We did a FOI workshop for all boards, committees, and commissions. We have finally completed the Army Corps of Engineers wetment delineation for the I park. For those who don't know what that means, I park was put up, but they didn't know exactly where the wetlands were. So we asked the Army Corps of Engineers to finish it off for us. We have a final report, so now we know exactly where the wetlands are, and then how to be able to explain that to property owners or the ones who are buying the lots. Worked with the state DOT for projects. Thank goodness, exit 32 is now back. And by the way, just so you know, I have the documentation when they first sent me the information on when that would be open. On the paper that they sent me, which was a year and a half ago, said it would be open on November 30th, and it did open on November 30th, so they were online. We're looking to do, create more savings for the town on land, some of the schools, do some solar mounted, ground-mounted solar projects versus putting them on roof, like on the high school, it was discussion there, also PCS and PMS, we're talking about there as well. We're trying to help out with some of the offset costs of Musa Pond Herbicide. It has to be done on a regular basis, so we keep the invasive mill foil down. We are going to be talking about this, I'm sorry to let you know this, but we will be talking about a series of, series of public hearings to talk about what to do with the Annex Building. And then the other ones here are listing the local food pantry, Three Food Drives Project Inn, and also that Kermont did do a, you see the check for them for $50,000 for being able to control our expenditures. Rest are fairly quick, I promise. Water Pollution Control Authority, it's the same members of the board of selectmen who are water pollution control, and we have probably more coming up as to what's going to be done for the additions and modifications. Pension Committee, there are five members there, selectmen, all three selectmen, and also the Chair of the Board of Finance, Chair of the Board of Education, and seven employees last year that retired. There's going to probably be more this year. That's much fun. And the finance department talks about what they do, and they have the envious job of working with the Board of Finance and keeping everything checked, so it's easy to read the material, and also working with the audit firm in marketing. The next one is a big change, and I won't bore you with reading through that, but basically that is the town of Plainfield Park and Recreation. Now it has a full-time recreation director. There are a lot of things you can go online now and see, sign up for and see. A lot of the resources there, we're trying to add more things, STEM programming after school. So Mark is doing a very good job. We're just going to make sure that we keep on his toes. So if you have any questions after your retreat here, feel free to reach out to Mark and ask. Highway Department, they talked about all their equipment they have, and they did receive a new mower, and I know that in annual budget, they talked about what they'd like to have done. Obviously, their job is to keep our streets clean. I think they've done a very good job of that so far, and I'd like to have that continue. By the way, we were at the emergency management facility, working with the director there when the storm came through, and we were helping them out, and they were very responsive to getting out there and taking care of those blocked streets that had trees down and lines down. So they do have a huge responsibility in relationship to that. So they have a list of the paved roads of 2021 on that final page. I will be coming over the page soon online, talking about what they plan on doing this coming year. Planning re-zoning report is very self-explanatory. They have 27 applications. They have different things that they were doing, special permits, staff amendments, and site developments, and you'll see the list of the people who were on that board there. Planning zoning department talks about the different things that they do in zoning. Economic development, marketing, zoning is also part of that planning and zoning. Economic development is talking about what we can help to bring in and how we support those businesses that do come in. Tax collector. So you have a full breakdown of the calendar of when things are due. And for those people who are having a problem with payments, just give a call. Okay, because if you are having a problem, we have someone who's very willing to talk to you about what we can do to help you out. We'd like to see you still need your home and be able to pay. It's just a few parts and hardships. We understand that. So I appreciate that very much. And I was mentioning before the emergency management and how their operational center works. And then we talked about the town clerk. And I would say this right now, I appreciate the fact that, Mark, you came into a very difficult position, and you did a great job. I just wanted to thank you very much for that. And now we are doing the same thing again, so. At this point, you can see that one of the biggest things that we deal with on a regular basis is people coming into the office, usually asking for, I don't know, transfer station stickers all the time. So we try to accommodate as best you can, and by the way, for those people who are interested, all of this stuff is online, so if you have a question and concern about that, you can go online and ask. Animal control, there's office. All right, don't kill me. You know this is pre-val here. Be good in the van. But this is what happened last year with the assessor's office, and it's giving a breakdown of how, I think it's very important to understand, towards the bottom third of that page, talks about your top 10 taxpayers in the town of Plainfield. So you know that that will change next year, all the new businesses that are coming in, so. And then a very short message from the chief of police. I think it's by Pete Payton. Yeah. So he would have joined us from the meeting downstairs, but he's probably still talking. That was probably half an hour. But you have information about the changeover in the police station. You have pictures of the different officers, which I think is very helpful if you're, as long as it's a close-up pictures. But you can at least know who the offices are when they arrive at your house or in the neighborhood. I could tell you from this, one of the highlights, which isn't a great highlight, is the fact that they had in the budget to purchase a couple of vehicles. You know how difficult it is to buy a brand-new vehicle, and they still haven't done that yet. Holding cells, yes, absolutely. So there was an upgrade to the holding cells. There was an upgrade to the radio system. And I think they're just finishing up Officer Brill. Do you have, is that accurate for the radios that are all just about updated now?
Yes, sir. So we have additional work. We need additional radio system, same system that the state needs to light. We're further controlling operation of that radio system. And that's been a major increase in all safety. We got changes in conditions that are being dropped. We are able to have full action to dispatch, to be able to get our transmission to our patients.
And again, a thank you to the residents of Plainfield, Liberty, for that, because we were actually using most of the money back from the COVID money to pay for that. So very much appreciated. It helps. And the cells, the cells definitely are an improvement of what we have before. It talks about the new things coming into the system. There's an overview of the organizational chart. We didn't have much to write. Page nine. And then there's a breakdown on page 10 of the things that happened on a regular basis. All right. WPCA has their own pages of what was going on. I included the Historical Society there as well, because we want to make sure that they're included. We're going to be updating their website as well soon. It hasn't been updated since we found out since 2014. Fire marshal talks about the incidents that occur on a regular basis. Police commissioners who are being right now, talk about what they review on a monthly basis with the police department. Annual floodings and water course commission. They're very important as well, because of the things that are coming into town. I can give you an example real quick. Load, on the loads. Amazon. Amazon had to go through a few steps to make sure that it was done properly, and they made sure they held into that, so I appreciate that very much. Zone board of appeals, they have a few things that are going on for different meetings, and applications approved 11. Last night, there was the Ag Commission, and they gave out the scholarship. And we're looking for more things from Ag Commission, and hoping that we can all work together and help them. And the Economic Development Commission is reporting here as well on their meetings. And the school system finally has a report of all the different things that are going on from last year. The love of last year was remote learning. They talked about the pros and cons of that as well. That was it. Welcome to take this home, read through them. And if you have any questions as a follow-up, I will be available in the office to answer any of your questions. Any questions right now? So without any questions, I would entertain a motion to accept the town department report and audit report. Karen? Sunny, thank you. Any other discussion at this time? Very none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. One more thing, entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you all very much.